Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission meeting this February 21st, 2023. Okay, we seem to have everyone's attention now. So, welcome to our meeting. For those of you who are here for the first time, I want to thank you for attending our City Commission meeting. Our meetings are really quite enjoyable, especially at the beginning, when we have the opportunity to recognize individuals, groups, or events that are important to our community. And tonight, we're going to have one presentation in particular that's very important to our community. But before we begin the program, I would ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please be seated. I'd also invite you to join everyone in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
President.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Here.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Here. So, we have full attendance. We have one agenda announcement, R3, the CAM was revised to correct the term of the agreement in the background detail. And we have one walk-on resolution, which has everyone received a copy of that resolution? Commissioner Herbst, did you receive a copy? I think you did, yeah.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Which we'll discuss at the end of the meeting tonight. And now, having said all that, can I have a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda?
So moved.
Been moved. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda are now approved. So, for tonight's presentation, I would like to invite Commissioner Pam Beasley-Pitman, who will present a proclamation declaring Black History Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And while she's going to the podium, I'd like to invite the following people to please step up and join us in this presentation. First, I'd like to recognize Eloise Simmons. Eloise, where are you? Please come on up. Ninety-two years old. I'd also like to invite Johnny Dixon, the president of the International Longshoreman, Art Kennedy Jr., vice president, and Anthony Gross, financial officer, also representing the Black Police Officers Association, Captain Cecil Stone, Detective Henry Lockwood, Lieutenant Tanisha Stevens, Officer Delica Harris, Officer Ashley Williams, and retired Officer Nina Justice. Can you all please step forward, front and center? Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Good evening, everyone. I'm really excited tonight, this being my first resolution, and then also understanding this is actually the first time that the city has done a resolution recognizing Black History Month. So, I'm gonna read the proclamation. It's beautiful, so I'm gonna ask you all to bear with us as we read completely through it, okay? In recognition of Black History Month, February 2023, whereas February has been designated by a Black History Month in celebrating it nationwide. In honor of its observance, the city of Fort Lauderdale proudly salutes the culture, the heritage, and the tradition of the African Disparah. And whereas during the month-long celebration, we pay tribute to the legacies of Black pioneers, many who have given their lives in pursuit of freedom, equality, and preserving human rights. And whereas, we uplift and honor local Black heroes such as Eula Gandy Johnson, Dr. James F. Sixtrunk, and Dr. Von D. Mizell. Their example of preservation in the face of adversity and lifelong commitment to pursuing civil rights for Black Americans has inspired us all. And whereas, Eula Johnson, known as the Rosa Parks of Broward County, made history on July 4th, 1961, when she helped organize the Black demonstrators to participate in the Wade in the Water of the all-white Fort Lauderdale beach. Her actions led to the eventual desegregation of the city's beaches. And whereas, Dana A. Dorsey, a Black real estate mogul who was the original owner of Fisher Island, extended his holding as far as north as Fort Lauderdale. He used his wealth and influence as a businessman and a property owner to make a significant contribution to the Black community. And whereas, Dr. James F. Sixtrunk, the first Black medical doctor to practice in Fort Lauderdale, partnered with Dr. Mizell to open Providence Hospital in 1938 to serve the city's Black population. Today's Sixtrunk Boulevard is named in his honor. And whereas, their bravery and commitment to achieving equality for all is deeply rooted within the community today, and their legacy is prominent throughout numerous individuals and organizations. And whereas, the mayor and the City Commission would like to recognize lifelong resident, 92-year-old Eloise Simmons. Ms. Simmons is respected matriarch of her family, graduate of Gillett High School, class of 1949, and worked for both the city Fort Lauderdale Clerk's office and the county supervisor's election office. She served with Esther Lilly Gates, who was also one of Broward County's first Black United States Census workers. She worked for Broward County Public Schools. She was a member of the city's CIR team, Citizens on Patrol, and served as the secretary for Historic Dorsey River Band Civic Association. And whereas, the Fort Lauderdale Black Police Association is And whereas the Fort Lauderdale Black Police Association is comprised of police officers and citizens who are dedicated to promoting social justice, fairness, and effectiveness in law enforcement, focused on improving the perception of law enforcement by educating the community through an annual team summit and also the Mills, excuse me, the Meadows, the Mills Mentor Program. Additionally, they strengthen the relationship in our community as well as hosting annual turkey giveaways and a toy drive. And wherein, whereas the International Longshoreman Association has been on the front line of America workers in the maritime industry since the 1500s, the Fort Lauderdale Local 1526 was chartered in 1937, standing for equality for quality service and representing their members and the communities where they live and work, ensuring upcoming generations are prepared to lead their successors into the future. Now, therefore, we as the city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale do hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and we are encouraging all who live here to uphold and to uphold the principles of courage, fairness, justice, and equality, dated the 21st day of February the year 2023, signed by our mayor, Mayor Dean J. Trentalas.
Yeah, can I get everybody to move this way a little bit? I want to center you guys in the front. Can I get you step forward a little bit, step forward a little bit this way? Everybody kind of fanned in behind each other. Yeah, that looks great. Thank you. All right, everybody right here. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
See you all at the Sistrog Parade.
You appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Beasley Pittman. And now we move on with the rest of the agenda. So now is an opportunity for the City Commission to review the consent agenda items and to determine whether or not they'd like to pull one of the items to be discussed and voted on separately. If no one has has asked that an agenda item be pulled and voted on separately, then all those items will be voted on together in a single of voice vote. If there's a member of the community that wishes to speak on any consent agenda item, now would be the time to step forward and say that you want to so speak. I've received only one such request, and it's only if there are questions. So there's really nobody who has asked to pull any of the items. So from the commission, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any items you'd like to be pulled?
None, thank you.
None. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
Commissioner Glassman?
None, thanks, Mayor.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
CR one.
CR one?
CR one.
CR one, okay. So, except for CR one, do I hear a motion to approve all the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes. Now to CR one, Vice Mayor.
I have the floor.
Yes, you have the floor.
Okay, the big concern, and I've already spoken to the city attorney and the city manager who have given me reassurances, but I just want to go over this one more time. This is for a grant for La Solis, and as you know, we've had a meeting about that already. It's in the plan phase, and now it's going to go to design and engineering. The grant has the some of the design and plans attached to it, and I just want to be reassured, like what you had said, that that we could do some modifications in the design and engineering subsequent to the application from because what I understand is that they we still have to approve the final engineering and design before the grant is is considered. Is that correct?
Well, I can't answer that.
No, no, but this is to the attorney and city manager.
Yeah.
I'm gonna let Dee Wayne talk on that.
Right. This is an email that you'd sent me, just to just to reiterate the email that you'd sent me earlier.
That is correct. Our office reviewed the documents required for the submission of the grant, and the obligations and the designs are approved as part of the grant award and would will be be finalized through the awarding process.
Bless you.
Okay, so.
So the submission of this application does not obligate you to a particular design. It obligates you to a particular project, not design.
And that's all I wanted to know. No further comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So that's a good point, because the design itself has never really been approved. It was just the section of the of La Solis, which was the retail section, that this commission approved, what, a year ago? Yeah. And so this this item is to move forward with the application for grant funding in order to pay for it, whatever it is. And part of it is we have allocated money already for the design of the of the project, correct?
Correct. So this is for construction dollars. So right now, all we have is a concept, conceptualization design.
Right.
We're now going into a firm design or a construction design, which is going to take approximately probably eighteen months. We're gonna see how we can streamline that. But the funding for this grant would be available till 2027. So there's ample time between now and then to firm up the design.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Jackie, did you want to speak?
Go ahead. While she's going up, City Manager, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Because I, the mayor's correct, in June of 2022, we provided direction to advance the project from conceptual plans to design for the downtown portion, the shops, Coley Hammock, et cetera, et cetera. But I do want to just remind everyone that a year earlier, on June 15th of 2021, the City Commission actually accepted the entire La Solis Boulevard vision plan, the western corridor and the eastern corridor. Now, subsequently, a year later, we we decided to move forward with the design of the western corridor. But I want to make sure that we're still not going to forget the eastern corridor, and that even though we're moving forward first with the western corridor, that monies are allocated for design in the future budget. I know this year, we're just concentrating on the budget with regards to the western portion. I want to make sure that we're still going to be going after monies for the eastern portion as well, as was approved by the City Commission in June of 2021.
That is the plan.
Okay, thank you. Jackie Scott?
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here tonight regarding the La Solis mobility plan that's been that we've worked on. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of Coley Hammock, as well as being a member of the La Solis Mobility. This vision plan that we came up with, and I have to remind people, I've been involved in this community since the 1980s. I have seen hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on a plan, but never implementation. So when Commissioner Sorensen and Commissioner Glassman decided to have this group, and let's get together and really create a vision, it was probably the most robust inclusive group I've ever seen. No one was turned away. So the first meeting was held on September 7th, 2018. We met regularly. When COVID came, things changed a little bit, but we continued to meet via Zoom. Tonight is exciting for me and for many others, because after forty-plus years of trying to create a better La Solis in the community.
You're not that old, Jackie.
Yes, it's true. Do you know it, Dean? We're finally gonna make some progress. Coley Hammock and myself support the funding of this first phase. We're very excited. Anyway, I I just want the notion that people weren't involved to be eliminated, because everyone that wanted to be involved could come to the meeting and could participate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ladd, would you like to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'd just like to provide, similar to what Jackie said, Commissioner Sterman is a newcomer to this item that's been going on for, I'll say, thirty years, since I'm younger than Jackie. And I'd like to thank you, Commissioner, for for speaking with the neighborhood again. I was at your meeting. I believe that there was a pretty strong consensus that this work needs to be done, and that we want white sidewalks. And I would hope that you support the, what I hope is the majority of the Commissioners to move forward with this. Thank you.
Charlie, I have a question. Charlie, so did you attend a good number of the meetings over the course of two and a half years that Commissioner Sorensen and I convened?
I I think it was three years, but I age six. So I I pretty much came to all the meetings. I think we all got a little more educated about streetscape and looked at many, many alternatives for La Solis. It's a it's a difficult proposition. And I think at the end, there was consensus that at least on the shops area, which is what we're talking about, that the option was the best option to make a walkable, desirable street that still would allow the traffic to work.
Yes. And so you've you're familiar with the conceptual plans that were also done for the east and the west, for the design?
Yes.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection is, as Jackie Scott said, it was a robust discussion for over twenty meetings. There was never a meeting where we didn't just, everyone let it all out. And that's not always so easy in a room of maybe twenty-five to thirty stakeholders up and down La Solis from Andrews Avenue to the beach. But would you say at the end of the day, we came to a pretty darn good conclusion and a pretty good conceptual plan for the corridor?
Yeah, and I, as I remember it, and again, I was focused on the the commercial portion of the street, is that the east of Suspirro, the idea was leave it alone, maybe a couple of crosswalks, which I think everybody respected, and there was consensus on that, and I assume that that's where we still are. On the shops, I think there was consensus exactly what we're doing. There was agreement that the property owners in the commercial area would pay a significant amount of the cost, and that the residents would not be asked to pay that. And then at the downtown area, I think there was still some work going on to get consensus. But there had there was not, there was not a lot to change in the downtown area. That that's my remembrance of it. And again, we just finished some streetscape right by Louis Bossi. I think it's an example of what the street can be. And I still believe that we, if we do this, we can have one of the nicest streets in the country.
I agree, and I and I think we deserve that. So, you know, thank you for your efforts there as well. And then City Manager, the the east and west portions, those corridors, are those items still on the city website? Do you know? I haven't had a chance to look today. But I do have that in my backup, because I I have that conceptual design vision. We broke it up into the western corridor and the eastern corridor. Is that all still posted on the city's website?
We we do have a a website. I'm gonna be looking for that link, so give it to you.
Because I I think it's important for people that might want to just, you know, refresh their memory to take a look. As I said, we did spend some bucks working with a consultant. And as Charlie said, it was maybe almost three years of work. And I I think these two documents are really excellent. So I would just recommend that folks take a look. And as we move forward, I think this will be a great basis for people to, you know, move forward on. So thank you for that.
We do have it on the website.
Yes, it is. And it's under the transportation and mobility pages. There is a page there
specifically for the project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner, would you like to introduce the resolution?
Yes.
Resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, delegating authority to the city manager to submit a grant application in the amount of $38,500,000 to the United States Department of Transportation on the rebuilding American infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant Program to construct the western corridor and the Coley Hammock portion of the eastern corridor of the La Solis Boulevard Mobility Project, delegating authority to the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary incidental to the grant application and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the item is approved. M one, motion approving event agreements and related road road closures for the St. Patty's Day Festival at the Downtowner, a vegan block, a vegan block party, 10th Annual Fort Lauderdale Shamrock Run, 26th Annual Wine Spirits and Culinary Celebration, and La Solis Art Fair. Lot going on. Someone like to move the item?
I would, Mayor, but I did have a few comments for the City Manager.
What are your comments?
Thank you. So Greg.
Wait a minute. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, no, you can go ahead.
Thank you. So as you know, we we do talk a lot about events, especially as they take place on the Barrier Island, as some of these do. Again, I did receive some positive feedback, actually, during the Pride Parade from some of the residents, saying that they really liked and applauded the efforts of the city and the police department to monitor traffic and direct everyone and make things were flowing there. But then I also did hear some recent problems that people had after that, and again, with La Solis Circle. So I I think we're trying, but I think we still have to make sure that we 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 try even harder, just to be able to move traffic. And again, to make sure that, you know, folks have an easier time, you know, on on the Barrier Island when they're coming across the bridges, and then even when they're going north and south on whether it's A-1A or Birch Road. But I, again, I did hear as recently as just a couple of days ago, that again, there were some more issues when the area in and around La Solis Circle was supposed to be open by a certain time, and it wasn't. Again, we're just gonna need to, I think, work on signage, you know, when people are coming over the bridges so that they have a heads up. And again, I think it's going to also be a matter of manpower as well and woman power to direct the traffic on the street. So, thank you.
Okay, any further comments? There being none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M one is approved. M two, motion approving civil engineering services continuing agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Black and Veatch Corporation, Calvin Giordano and Associates, Chad Morn Associates, Craven Thompson Associates, Hazen and Sawyer, PC and Kimley Horn and Associates. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? There being none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M two is now approved. M three, a motion approving an agreement for the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport midfield run-up area expansion, weekly asphalt paving. Do I hear a motion?
Motion, move.
Motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? If none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M three is now approved. M four.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but we'd like to request, I'm sorry, skipped one. It's M five.
Which one, M five?
Yeah, to defer to next meeting.
You want to defer?
Yeah, we we have a legal technicality that we want to cure before we approve that item.
Okay, so we get to that, we'll see if we can.
Thank you.
Is there a date certain you want to move that to, or just take it off?
No, you can just take it off.
I'm sorry?
You can just take it off.
Okay. Okay, M four, motion approving agreement for the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport runway nine run-up area relocation and south-end taxiway intersection improvements with weekly asphalt paving. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If any questions, there being none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M4 is approved. M5, uh, wishes to be taken off. So do I hear a mo, do I, do I need to do a motion to defer?
No, sir. You can just remove it.
Motion to defer? Do I do a motion to defer?
It's not necessary to do a motion to defer. It can, you can just remove the item.
Okay, all right. So you just skip it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. M6, motion approving change order number one for the, already? Uh, for the La Solis undergrounding of overhead utilities, Ferrera Construction Southern, Division?
Mayor, what do, what do you mean already? This has been twelve years from the making. What do you mean already?
They just started.
No, they didn't just start. Uh, twelve years and you're saying already for a change order? Oh, my gosh. Seriously. But what I would like to say is, City Manager, can we get this done before hurricane season project?
We will be moving forward fast.
Twenty twenty-three hurricane season?
Okay.
Yes?
Yes, that's, that is the expected plan, substantially complete by September.
Well, that's not really the beginning of hurricane season, is it?
Commissioner, would you like to move the item?
Hurricane season begins like in June.
Do you like to move the item?
I'll move it, but I'm just saying, can we please just get it going?
Well, it takes time to underground these things.
I understand.
Twelve years.
Twelve years.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and, uh, M6 is now approved. Onto resolutions, R1, appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names into the record?
Yes, and bear with me, there is a bunch. Uh, for the March eighth resolution for Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Jason Hoffman nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Justin Greenbaum nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Citizens Committee of Recognition, Eugene Ellis nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Community Services Board, Gary Hensley nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Insurance Advisory Board, David Cooley nominated by Commissioner Herbst, and Tina Gelman nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Marine Advisory Board, Robert Washington nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Aviation Advisory Board, William Gilbert nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Community Appearance Board, Elka Keimel nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Education Advisory Board, Heather Brinkworth nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Christopher Relia nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Carlos Lang nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issue Blue Ribbon Committee, Mark Booth nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Parks Recreation and Beaches Board, Zilla Tarco nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District, Tom Walter nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And for tonight's resolution, Budget Advisory Board, John Rosstrom III nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Cemetery System Board of Trustees, Scott Busa nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Community Service Board, Amy Schimmelfang nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Christina Disbrow nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Fire Rescue Advisory Committee, George Farrell III nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Historic Preservation Board, Ashley Walker nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Marine Advisory Board, Tyler Brunel nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Noise Control Advisory Committee, Tim Petrillo nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Rocco Ferrera nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Miguel Pilgrim nominated by Mayor Trentalas, Eugene Ellis nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Nuisance Abatement Board, Joel Slotnick nominated by Mayor Trentalas, Parks Recreation and Beaches Board, Ronald Gough nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Twenty Twenty-three Walk of Fame Induction Committee, Gail Butler nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman. And we also received some names after publication, and if I could read those, that we could add them to the, uh, to this resolution as amended. Uh, Board of Adjustment, Douglas Mead, uh, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Code Enforcement Board, Justin Beecham nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Education Advisor Board, Aaron Gaul nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Fire Rescue Advisory Committee, Carlos Lang nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, William Brown nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Insurance Advisory Board, Ted Hess Senior nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Mark Schwartz nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Joseph Pachara Senior nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, and Jonathan Perillo nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Noise Control Advisory Committee, Ralph Stone nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Steve Hudson nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, Nuisance Abatement Board, Glenn Lindsay nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Park Recreation and Beaches Board, Charlie Leacock nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, and Sustainability Advisory Board, David Blatner nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Kelly Charles nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman, and Whitney Dutton nominated by Vice Mayor Sturman. And that rounds it out.
Okay, are there any additions or modifications to the nominations? There being none, uh, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
A resolution in City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here to and made a part hereof. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the resolution's now approved. I'm gonna thank all those members of the community who have agreed to participate on the, on either a board or a committee. Thank you for your commitment to our city and your sacrifice. R2, resolution terminating resolution number nineteen dash thirty-eight, a dock permit for usage of a public property by Neil Kalas as trustee of the seventeen hundred Brickell Land Trust located at seventeen hundred Brickell Drive. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution in City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, terminating the dock permit granted by resolution number nineteen dash thirty-eight for use, maintenance, and repair by Neil R. Kalas as trustee of the seventeen hundred Brickell Land Trust pursuant to section eight dash one four four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the resolution's now approved. R3, a resolution amending resolution twenty-two dash eighty-eight to replace quote "park-like" unquote with quote "opens public space" um, end quote in the southeast Seventeenth Street Causeway Bridge Use and Occupancy Agreement between the Florida Department of Transportation and the City of Fort Lauderdale. What's the purpose of this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so this is, um-
That was the language change, remember, that we spoke about last time?
I just wanna refresh my memory.
This is a request from DOT to re, to change the language. Um, when using park-like, it, uh, provides additional requirements in their domain. And so what we'd like to do is offer a language that is mutually convenient for both of us, the city and DOT. So, uh, staff reviewed it and is proposing this language change as part of the agreement.
Does this, does this, um, does this reduce their, their, uh, responsibilities in any way for space that had been previously been designated as open space? Remember, we had that controversy underneath the bridge that they wanted to repurpose it? And right now it's used for, for public use as opposed to repurposing it for whatever they wanna repurpose it for?
So this, this piece of land is, uh, is right-of-way primarily, right? And so below the bridge corridor, there is a, a walkable area.
Right.
However, um, if they need to do, let's say, certain maintenance or certain adjustments, um, under this language, they're allowed to, to proceed with those, again, coordinating with us. But, um, the park-like language is something that they were, um, they did not, even after we approved the, the agreement, is a request that they would like to remove to have more flexibility with upcoming projects that they may have.
Didn't the, didn't the community push back on this and, and, and indicate that that they were not keen on FDOT, um, taking this over for storage for vehicles or, or construction, um, uh, construction, uh, uh, what's the word I'm thinking of, staging area, uh, that they wanted to kept, you know, with seats and benches or whatever that's currently there? I believe that was the case, and that's why I'm wondering, open public space, I'm not sure what that means. Do you wanna, do you have any?
So I wanna, yeah.
Can you help us on this?
Good evening, Milos Mystor is Deputy Director for Transportation and Mobility. So, uh, again, it's a, it's a matter of just, uh, word, uh, FDOT. After we, resolution was approved last year, uh, FDOT really had a heartburn and they did not agree with, uh, with the term park-like. Uh, we spoke with them a couple of weeks ago, and what they were amenable to is open spaces. I do not believe that this changes the use of, of the space, and I believe that there was someone from FDOT that was supposed to attend tonight. I'm not sure if anyone, um, so they might be able to answer to any, any additional questions.
Well, the question is, what if we don't make this change? What happens?
Um, my understanding is that FDOT simply was not, uh, amenable to using park-like wording.
Unable to make it park-like?
Excuse me?
What, if we don't approve this, what is the result?
Uh, we would have to go back and, uh, and, uh, continue discussions with FDOT.
Well, Vice Mayor, you, you're familiar with this issue, right?
Yeah, this, this language is fine. This is fine. I mean, my, my neighborhood is fine with this. This is what we-
They're fine with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe the city attorney wants to weigh in.
Samir, it's a use and, um, occupancy agreement that FDOT is granting the city use of the property. So if we don't enter into it, we don't have use of it at all. Uh, so what they said is that they understand the intended use of the city of this space.
Right.
And that park-like proposes, uh, poses a, a issue, and that is too specific with regards to the park use and what is used as a transportation type of right-of-way. So they've agreed to use the term open space, which would be a use that would accommodate the types of uses that the city, um, intends to use, uh, that space for.
So this is, this is to allow greater flexibility for the city?
Correct.
As opposed to limiting the public's right of use for this space?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. And has a resolution been introduced? Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Yes, introduced.
Introduced. Um, resolution's been introduced. Anyone have any further questions? There being none, please call the roll. Thank you.
A resolution in City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending resolution number twenty-two dash eighty-eight to revise the use and occupancy agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transport, Transportation to remove park-like as permitted use and replace with open public space, providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R3 is approved. Then we have R4, which is similar, resolution amending resolution twenty-two dash eighty-nine to replace park-like with open public space in the Rivlin Woods Park Use and Occupancy Agreement between the Florida Department of Transportation and the City of Fort Lauderdale. Uh, any questions? There being none, someone like to introduce the resolution?
So moved.
A resolution in City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending resolution number twenty-two dash eighty-nine to revise the use and occupancy agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation to remove park-like as permitted use and replace with open public space, providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R4 is approved. R5, uh, this is a quasi-judicial resolution. This is approving a site plan level two development permit and design deviation request, uh, Two Hundred Third LLC. Uh, anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Uh, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures? Yes, I've met with Robert Lockery and Nektaria Chakas. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Um, had a conversation with Nektaria in regards to this, this project, a phone conversation.
Uh, I do, I did have also a, um, a meeting with the representative and their, and their, and the applicant. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, I met with, uh, Robert Lockery on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and I had a phone call conversation with Nektaria Chakas on February twenty-one, twenty twenty-three.
And Vice Mayor?
Uh, Robert Lockery.
Nektaria, could you come up for just a second and explain one more time what we're looking to accomplish here?
Good evening, Nektaria Chakas with the firm Lockery and Chakas on behalf of the applicant. This is, um, before you this evening for a quest for deviation from the downtown master plan requirements that have been codified. The reason for the modification is to allow the balconies to extend into the setbacks essentially, the tower separation. Um, on one side of the building, they're extending three feet more than were allowed. Um, on the other sides, they're extending six feet more than were allowed. But again, this is not for the entire length of the building. It's just for those areas, um, where the balconies extend, and they're not along the entire, um, uh, elevation, but they are intermittently placed along the-
So what is, so what is the separation without the balconies? What's, what's the separation between the two, between your building and the, and the future building?
It complies with, the only reason we're here is because the balconies extend. They're open-air balconies. So the building itself complies with the distance separation.
Okay. All right, anyone have any other questions?
Actually, Mayor, I have a question that I'd like to ask Chris. Chris, if that's okay?
Well, does this relate to this issue?
Well, of course it is.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, can I, I was just gonna close public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
I move to close public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Now you may ask your questions.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but when I go back in time, I remember that maybe this used to be interpreted differently. That staff seems to be interpreting this issue with these balconies in the setbacks a little bit different than in previous years. Am I remembering this incorrectly, or has there been a different way of looking at this now that is not the way we used to look at this before?
Sure. Uh, Chris Cooper, Director Development Services Department. So, we've pretty consistently allowed for some balcony encroachment based on other sections of the code that allow a three-foot encroachment into the, um, setback. In this case, they, they exceed that. So we consistently brought those forward to when they're in excess of that three-foot encroachment. So you may have seen some that come through, but the encroachment wasn't as great.
So it was just a sign that if it was more than three feet, it would be considered a deviation?
That's right. And it's based on another section of code that allows for that specific, um, encroachment. And so we have brought things forward that exceed that encroachment.
And does that, does that language, I'm assuming it's in the ULDR?
It is.
Does that say that it, if it's more than three feet, it's a deviation?
Well, if it's more than three feet, it's not an architectural feature, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't, um, meet the code.
No, I'm saying the balcony design.
Right.
If it's more than three feet, cause now we're saying it's a deviation.
It's from a difference. Let me check with the former zoning administrator.
Check. I, I, you know, I'm just going back to my time spent on planning and zoning, and this just seems a different way that we're looking at this now than we ever used to look at it.
Uh, good evening, Anthony Fajardo, Assistant City Manager. So, um, what Chris is referring to is there's a section of our ordinance that talks about architectural features, and they can project a certain distance from into, into the different setbacks. The way the downtown master plan is written, uh, you know, prior, it was written more with guidelines, and then we tightened it up as we moved forward, and the city commission adopted additional regulations. And what he's trying to explain is that past that distance that's allowed in the ordinance, we look at the distance that's, that's written in the master plan to determine when there's a deviation. So if the, if the setback for that architectural feature, or whatever that feature is, that's beyond the, the scope of what that section of the ULDR would say, is permissible, then we would look at that as a deviation. Does that help?
So is it clear in the ULDR, or is this simply an interpretation?
No, it's clear in the ULDR. It, it gives you exact percentages of how many, how many linear feet of architectural features, how far they can encroach. It's, it's written very clearly in that section. So it's in, uh, it's in the accessory structures section of the ULDR.
Okay. Thank you. I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? There being none?
Well, before, um, it's in your district, Steve. What's your thought?
No, I'm fine with this. Uh, and I've had, I've had absolutely zero, uh, feedback from the residents on this. So it's, doesn't not seem to be an issue.
Okay. Um, there be no further questions or comments? Please call the roll. There be no further questions or comments, please call the roll.
Need an introduction.
I thought we'd... Okay, I'm sorry. Someone like to introduce a resolution?
Introduced.
And that's for approval? A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the issuance of a site plan level two development permit for an alternative design that meets the overall intent of the downtown master plan for the development of a 43-story, 388-mixed-use residential and commercial development located at 200 Northeast 3rd Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the Downtown Regional Activity Center, City Center and Zoning District. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R5 is now approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. OFR 1, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Code of Ordinances, Chapter 9, Building and Construction, Article 2, Permits and Inspections, Division 2, Fees to Adjust Building Fees for Services Related to Land Development and Permitting. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Any questions or comments? There being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending section 9-48 general permit fees by amending permit by affidavit fees of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and OFR 1 is now approved on first reading. OSR 1, this is on second reading, an ordinance ratifying and approving the transfer of Lauderdale Isle Water Management District into the City of Fort Lauderdale and providing for the modification of the district's charter and boundary. Anyone have any questions or comments regarding that? There being none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
So introduced.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, relating to the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District, ratifying and approving the creation and transfer of the district, providing for a charter of the district, amending the service area, providing for recitals, authority and modification of the district boundaries, providing for codification of scrivener's areas, modifications that may arise from consideration in public hearings, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.